And if the clerk could take the roll, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
The first item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
The first item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
The next motion carries. The next item is review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have approval of our minutes from our October 9th County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have two items today under Chair's remarks. As you know, homelessness continues to be a significant problem, not only in Minnesota, but also in Anoka County. And there's really no formula for who could be homeless. It can be caused by something as simple as losing a job, a health crisis, something more complex such as mental illness or chemical dependency. In January 2018, a point-in-time survey was done to determine how many people are homeless and how many children are and where they are. Sixty-six individuals were homeless or living outside, 134 were homeless and staying in shelters or transitional housing, and 283 more were essentially couch-hopping between friends and/or relatives. Anoka County has been very involved and committed to the effort of ending homelessness. The Heading Home Anoka County Housing Collaborative plays a vital role in bringing together the community to support the prevention and elimination of homelessness. This week, two events are taking place as part of Homeless Awareness Month. Joining us to tell us a little bit more is Jerry Peterson, our Director of Community Social Services and Behavioral Health, and Michelle Reed, our Program Coordinator. Jerry?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Jerry Peterson, Director of Social Services and Behavioral Health, thank you again so much for letting our department, giving us a chance to highlight some upcoming events and which is, will hopefully help address some of the issues around homelessness. It's been exciting to see our staff and community partners work together to find ways to help individuals and families and youth who struggle with the many barriers of finding, finding or keeping a roof over their heads. We know that this is not just a one-agency issue. It's only with the help of many hands that we can address this issue and find the needed solutions. I want to introduce you who's going to, to one of those set of hands, Michelle Reed, our Program Coordinator, who is going to give you some more information about the upcoming events and highlight them, but then also some other interesting information. Michelle?
Thank you, Jerry. Good morning, Commissioners, Madam Chair, it's a pleasure to be here. The Heading Home Anoka Housing Collaborative, as you know, is a network of organizations and individuals as the primary community planning entity to address the needs of homelessness in, the population of homelessness in Anoka County. The Heading Home Anoka Housing Collaborative is Anoka County's local HUD initiative to end homelessness. And together, we work with the suburban counties of Washington, Dakota, Scott, and Carver Counties as the continuum of care to collectively report various information to Housing and Urban Development. Such things include the point-in-time count, which you referenced, Madam Chair, that was done this year on January 24th, which counts the number of people experiencing homelessness. We also do the housing inventory count, which counts the number of beds in Anoka County for those to house those people experiencing homelessness. And the results of both are then reported through the Annual Housing Assessment Report, which goes to Congress. That, it then determines the amount of money available for regions to compete for funds to aid in our quest to end homelessness through the notice of funding availability. Then, based on our system performance measures, HUD awards those dollars to the continuums of care, allowing us to continue our work. The Heading Home Anoka Housing Collaborative, our mission is to educate the community at every level regarding homelessness, the need for affordable housing, and how to serve those who experience homelessness. Here are some of the participating agencies, and these agencies who have attended at least 50% of the meetings over the last 12 months are eligible to vote on issues related to the collaborative. Some common reasons for homelessness include a lack of affordable housing, a lack of income to afford market rent, rent increase if people have a pet that they're not willing to part with, no or poor rental or credit history, a criminal history, loss of income, or physical or mental health concerns. And the graph that is listed here just demonstrates how the median rent has increased over time. What does homelessness look like, really, in Anoka County? Well, there are people that are staying in their cars or in vans and parking lots, living or camping outside, maybe going to the hospital, a treatment center, or jail, or living with family and friends. Additionally, there's, for kids, there's even a greater impact. According to the National Center for Homeless Education and the Federal Education for Homeless Children and Youth Program, children and youth experiencing homelessness face unique barriers to early intervention and education impacting overall academic achievement, including poor health, mental health concerns, fatigue, and hunger, making it difficult to focus on school. And given they're highly mobile, it does, they do then lack the continuity that they need, and of course, then an increase in absenteeism and the likelihood of dropping out of school. And within a particular school year, almost half the children experiencing homelessness will attend two different schools, and 28% will attend three or more different schools. And on average, it takes four to six months for children to recover after changing schools. Now, I do have here a story for you about a success story, actually, from someone who has been homeless to creating a home. So this is a single mom who has a nine-year-old autistic son who lost a daughter to SIDS. She has a history of chemical dependency, a history of mental health issues, has had bad credit, and has been working, though, a lot. Now, of course, we've seen the multiple barriers from the previous slide, as we indicated, and on average, she was making $950 a month working overnight. And because she was working overnight, her son needed to stay with other family, causing them to be separated, and then she was couch-hopping. Now, she has changed jobs, increasing her income, she went to treatment, and she's been sober for 15 months. She's been staying at Family Promise and was assessed through coordinated entry with the help of Salvation Army. She was deemed eligible through a new program developed by Family Promise called Homes for Keeps, in which manufactured homes are rehabilitated by volunteers, and then the families that are coming out of Family Promise that have income are able to work with case management to then own that home in the future. While at Family Promise, she secured a house cleaning job with daytime hours, moved into a supervisory role on top of it. So now, because she's working during the day, it allowed her to increase her income and obviously be reunited with her son, averaging $1,400 to $1,700 per month. The manufactured home park required a deposit, which the Salvation Army was able to pay using the Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program dollars. And since the family was homeless and they found their own housing, this is exactly what we've designed FHPPAP to be used for. Now, this is the exact home that this single mom just moved into last week. Because of the collective efforts of our providers, she's now able to call this her home. Her expecting housing costs in the unit, including lot rent, all utilities and taxes will be about $685 per month, or 44% of her income. Family Promise will be providing supportive services by helping with money management over the next year, and additionally, Cars for Neighbors recently assisted in providing routine maintenance so she could continue to get to work safely. Now, as you mentioned, we do have a couple unique opportunities coming up here on Thursday, the 25th of October. The Anoka Community Connect Building Opportunities Strengthening Communities is happening at St. Tim's from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in Blaine. Now, think about this as a networking or referral or resource fair. It's a one-day event where people who are precariously housed, homeless, or otherwise struggling can come to obtain the resources that they need to help them thrive. And there is a core group of volunteers and service providers who are here today, who have generously given of their time, who might like to take a minute and introduce. Johnne Krantz is the Program Director at Stepping Stone Emergency Housing and the Chair of our Heading Home Anoka Housing Collaborative. Barb Sopp, the Housing Director with ACAP and the Fiscal Agent for Anoka Community Connect. Patty Eason, Anoka County Job Training Center Senior Vocational Counselor and Services Committee Chair for Anoka Community Connect. David Frye is the Executive Director at Family Promise in Anoka County. And Sue Rosendahl is Senior Social Worker with the Salvation Army. We have 51 providers and resources. We have 18 employers that are ready to conduct on-the-spot interviews. Food is being donated by a variety of organizations, including Cub Foods and Starbucks. Not to mention the generous donation of St. Tim's with their location and the use of their tables and chairs. We've got round-trip free transportation, which is available in selected sites around northern Anoka County. And if you'd like, people can refer to the website here, which is anokacommunityconnect.webly.com to get the times and locations for the transportation. However, we're unable to transport wheelchairs or children who aren't in car seats, so just to be responsible about that. And we do also have childcare available at St. Tim's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for children who are walking through age five. Lastly, we have the 2018 Minnesota Homeless Study, which is our statewide survey of people experiencing homelessness. This is done every three years, and while their research leads up this charge, Anoka County has participated in every triennial survey since 1991, when it started. And this is similar to the point-in-time count, however, it is a more extensive survey, which is a face-to-face interview done with clients who are experiencing homelessness to, and to collect the information that led to their homeless situation in the first place, and the data that is used is gathered to develop and expand programs to help end homelessness. Our Heading Home Anoka Housing Collaborative continues to grow, expanding the passion and the commitment that's already present to end homelessness. Each agency has representation at the monthly meetings, which are held at the Church of St. Timothy in Blaine on the second Wednesday of every month from 12:30 to 2:30. It is an open meeting, and we invite anybody to attend to participate as they're able. I'd also like to thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for your time and efforts in supporting the work of the Heading Home Anoka Housing Collaborative and the work that's being done to end homelessness in Anoka County. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much to both of you and to each individual provider as well. I know that it's your passion and commitment that makes a significant difference in the lives of people within our community who are experiencing homelessness. And back when we started on this journey, one of the really premises of our plan was that we recognized that government alone cannot solve the issue. It really needs to be the entire community working together, and I just think when we look at the progress that has been made, it has been because of really those community efforts and those partnerships. So, thank you so much for the great work that you do. You know, it is so essential that residents are aware of the importance of preventing and ending homelessness, and that all individuals have access to a warm, safe place to have a roof over their head. Again, please spread the word about the Anoka County Connect event this Thursday from 10 to 6 at the Church of St. Timothy in Blaine. And at this time, I'd like to ask that my fellow Commissioners join me in supporting Resolution 2018-131, proclaiming November 2018 as Homeless Awareness Month in Anoka County. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Our second item this morning is to recognize Cory Camp, who recently received a very prestigious honor. As Chair of our Finance and Capital Improvements Committee, I'd like to have Commissioner Look tell us more about this award and introduce Cory.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. In September, at the Minnesota Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference, Anoka County Finance and Central Services Division Manager Cory Camp was selected to receive the Thomas Moran Award. This award recognizes an individual's demonstrated outstanding efforts for the improvement of public financial administration by teaching, mentoring, and acting as a public finance ambassador to promote high standards in the field of government finance in Minnesota. Cory received not one, but two nominations this year from the state GFOA members, and since the award was established in 1980, Cory is only the 19th person to receive this special award. His nominations addressed his passion and dedication to public sector finance for the past 30 years, and as a public auditor, a general finance team member, and finance director with cities and counties. The nominations also spoke to his commitment to improving finance operations and developing finance professionals that are second to none. I recall, Madam Chair, when we were hiring Cory, we kind of looked at his skill set and knew that, that he would be well-positioned to take over for Kevin Peterson at that time. And, and in fact, he's been able to wear multiple hats at the county here in terms of not only as director, but investment, kind of manager overlooking investments, and he's done just a fantastic job. We want to congratulate you, Cory. This honor is certainly well-deserved, and I'm sure it means a lot, coming from, from your peers especially. I'd like you to say a few words.
Sure. Right, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Commissioner Look, Commissioners. So, this award was, was very much unexpected when I received it, so it was very, it was very humbling and honored, especially being recognized by your peers, as Commissioner Look pointed out. I would like to thank you for taking the time to recognize this award and your support for, with my involvements with both Minnesota GFOA and even at the national GFOA level. And I also need to thank Jerry Soma, our County Administrator, he's been a big encouragement to me. And then also the finance leadership team and as well my finance staff, and there are many of them here today in, in support of me, so I couldn't do this without them. You know, I love working in, in the public finance sector, I've done it for years, and I love being able to share what we do and highlight Anoka County whenever possible. So, and then in closing, I also like to thank all the departments and division managers that we work with, just for their support is, in helping us do the great work that we try to do every day.
Well, congratulations on just an incredible honor, and we are just very proud of the great work that you have done, and just proud how you have been able to really highlight, showcase some of the great work that you're doing within Anoka County with the incredible team that you have here as well. So, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Prestigous.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could just make a quick comment, I, many of you know I serve on AMC and the executive committee there. Cory is recognized statewide for the work that he does, and we were lucky to land him here, and we intend to keep him, but, but I will say that two words come to mind, and that's confidence and leadership. Have complete confidence in the work that he does. You don't have to second-guess stuff, look over. And I know it's not just Cory, I know it's his entire team, and that's where the leadership comes in. You don't have a strong team beneath you that works hard for you and believes in you unless you're a good leader. So for that, thank you, Cory, and congratulations.
So that concludes Chair's remarks today, but before moving on to committee reports, just wanted to highlight, you know, did you know that 75% of people addicted to heroin started out with prescription opioids? And more than 70% of people who abuse prescription painkillers get them through friends and/or relatives. Saturday, October 27th, is National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, but here in Anoka County, it is an everyday occurrence. It really is a year-round effort, and we make it very easy for residents to clean out their medicine cabinet, and we have many spots throughout Anoka County where you can safely dispose of those prescription pills that you no longer need. Especially with the holidays coming up, and there are people coming and visiting, and relatives and friends, again, just a reminder to go through those medicine cabinets, dispose of old prescription drugs that you are no longer utilizing. You can go to our website at anokacounty.us/rxtakeback or search "prescription drop-off" on our website. So now, on to committee reports, beginning with Management Committee. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one action item and then a Chair's report, and this is recommended by the Management Committee and new positions, three new positions, the higher head, non-compliment, Sheriff's Office, one FTE detention deputies, times three.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
No, it's been moved by Commissioner Brassad, signed by Commissioner Ghamash. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now the Chair report.
The, this item is just a kind of a housekeeping thing. In 2016, Good Friday was switched to be a personal holiday, and they're changing the date that the accrual starts to January 1st.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
And thank you, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Now we'll move on to Transportation Committee report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Transportation Committee meeting was held on Monday, October 15th, 9:00 a.m. here in the Government Center. I was unable to attend, but in my stead, Vice Chair, Commissioner Look, I understand, ran the meeting wonderfully. We have a couple of action items today for the board. The first, the committee recommends approval of a resolution conveying county-owned property along Jefferson Street to the city of Blaine.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
So moved.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Brassad for their discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Next, the committee recommends approval of Resolution 2018-Tr41, a resolution amending Resolution 2018-66, which authorized the county engineer to acquire right-of-way for Project SP-002618032 on County Road 18, which is Broadway Avenue, from east of Potomac Street to west of Kettle River Boulevard in the city of Columbus.
And I will offer the resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, the rest of my report is informational. Concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Schulte, now we'll move on to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee report. Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On October 16th, the Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met, came away with an action item, which is the county, committee recommends the county board approve contract C0006841 for Blaine Human Services Center Cleaning Services with Perfection Plus Incorporated, and amount not to exceed $91,800, with an option to renew for additional one-year periods. We did go out for a bid on this, and they were the prior entity we were using, and they came in actually a little lower than they did before, so they're actually very interested in retaining the contract, and they've done great work, so we're very happy to continue that relationship with them.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then you have a Chair report as well, Commissioner.
Right, I do, thank you, Madam Chair. This is the Chair's report due to the timing of the bonds that were sold in the market, and, and so, this is basically a recommendation the county board adopt Resolution 2018-F6 accepting the bid with UMB Bank for the issuance in General Obligation Bond Series 2018-A. And you'll see the information, resolution was handed out, and
And you'll see the information, resolution was handed out, and Corey, after receiving his award here, is going to get to work and explain to us how we came out on these bonds. And then also I asked him if he would give kind of just a little background on the AAA or AA plus, AAA comparison rating, and how that played out this time, so.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Look, Commissioners. Yesterday, we did, we were in the market selling bonds. Back on September 18th, the board had authorized us to move forward with the concept of selling 10.585 million bonds. We are going to sell a little bit less, and we'll be talking about that in a moment. I'm going to kind of turn this over to Elizabeth Bergman, our financial advisor from Springstead. She will kind of walk through the sale, the results of the sale, and kind of even be able to highlight a little bit about the AA plus rating from S&amp;P and what we kind of went through, because she was with us throughout the whole rating call and everything that we did, and so she'll be able to highlight some of Commissioner Look's questions and kind of give you kind of an idea of where we're at today. So Elizabeth?
Thank you. Good morning. Excuse me. I have results for the sale that I'll send around as well. Thank you very much, and a pleasure to be with you this morning. Yes, you all had a very positive sale yesterday at 1:00 in the afternoon. You received eight bids on your sale, which is a very good number as compared to a lot of sales that are in the market. I think that reflects two things. One, the recognition of the county in the market with a favorable, you know, awareness, and it also was a relatively large sale, just about $10 million, so that attracts more bidders as well. You had a good benefit of those bids in that among those eight bidders, excuse me, thank you, Corey, the distance between your first, the highest winning bid and the next bid down, it was $30,000. So you can see in interest cost over the life of the deal, you can see that having those multiple bidders really pushes the envelope and makes sure that you all get the good deal. So overall, very positive outcome. We had put together recommendations. Springstead created a scenario of what we thought the debt would look like in September, and unfortunately, it's a little higher than what we had projected in September, and that's really about the market movement. I think there's a slide here that shows two graphs showing what the market has done over the past year, and then what it's done over the past couple decades. So in the first slide where you see four essentially parallel lines, the top line reflects what's going on in the market today, the yields, the interest rates, and two lines down, the long, let's call it rust-colored dashes, show where the market was in September. So you can see that there's been quite a bit of movement upward with the higher number being a higher yield. So all things considered, considering how much the market has moved, the county actually performed favorably compared to what rates are, so compared to our projections. It's also worth seeing the other side, which is a historical view of what rates are in the market, and the gray bars represent the full range of what has the highest and the lowest rates in the market, with the orange bars going across being averages, and the navy bars at the very bottom being what's happening in the market today. So you can see rates remain well below averages and really toward the bottom end of the range that we've seen since 1993. So while rates are moving up, you're still in a very favorable position, and the outlook at this point in the market is that rates are going to go one way in the near term, and that is up. So all things considered, a very positive outcome. It also resulted in refunding savings, because a part of the issue was refunding, of about half a million dollars, which is $100,000 on the budget every year, so positive news there as well. Corey mentioned that the sale amount came down a little bit yesterday. That's because there was a premium received on the bonds, so that's saying investors are saying that they want higher interest rates in the future, but they'll give you more money today. The net impact of that is that you reduce the size, so you effectively are borrowing less but getting the same amount of money, if that makes sense, I hope. Now I need to figure out, well, I don't need to figure out how to go back. As to the rating, as Corey mentioned, I was with Corey and his team the whole way through, and it's worth noting at this point that I'm a former rating analyst myself, so I have seen this done a lot of times. And I will say that Corey and his team did a fantastic job. They were great advocates for the county, highlighting all the things that are going well, and having frank discussions with the rating agency about the things where there were concerns, as well as Corey following up with some vigorous numbers and rationale. So it was all very well done. The rating agency, S&amp;P, chose to affirm the AA plus. Corey did ask in the phone call, what is the difference, and was very good advocate for the county in asking about what would make the difference to go to that AAA. And the real crux of the matter is about the wealth levels in the county. The S&amp;P was very clear that management was exceptionally strong, financial position, financial flexibility, liquidity, all seen as distinct positives, and notably, debt was in the highest category. It sounds funny to say debt is in the highest category, and it's a good thing, but it means that the debt was a very low. It was a AAA kind of debt with rapid amortization and debt representing just 3% of market value. So that was one of the other things they looked at as a very strong characteristic of the county. But like I said, it's wealth levels that set the county apart from the peers, both in Minnesota and nationally. So there are two metrics that S&amp;P uses to judge sort of the economic vitality. One is effective buying power of residents, and one is taking the market value of the county and putting a per capita measurement on that. The Anoka County is about 108% of the nation in effective buying power, and market value is 98,000 full value per capita, market value per capita. If we look at Minnesota medians on those metrics, across Minnesota, AAA's have effective buying power of 128, so 128% of the nation, and the market value per capita is 112. Now that is Minnesota medians, and that's for cities and counties both. Counties tend to have a little lower wealth levels because they are a larger geographic area, and there's more diversity that brings power and credibility to the credit. So that gives you a sense of how you compare to those AAA's. I don't think that you, the county would necessarily need to be at those medians, but I think it's worth understanding how you compare and what that is holding you back from the AAA. That said, the rating agency was very favorable in all their comments, and, you know, we had a very frank conversation with them, that it's wealth levels, that's the thing that makes the credit look different. And so with all that, I'd say great sale, and I recommend that you all accept the bid. And I, oh, and I'm sorry, and I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Thank you. You had indicated the AAA counties are 112 on market value and 128 effective buying power.
Yep.
Where were we stacked up on that?
So effective buying power, you're at 108.
108.
Compared to 128.
Yep.
And market value, you're at 98,000 compared to 112. But it is worth bearing in mind that that is not just counties, it's counties and cities, so the county number would be a little lower, but I couldn't get it a published county number.
Okay.
Further discussion or questions?
Madam Chair, just a comment. I find it really interesting that our strongest characteristic is our debt, that position that this county board has taken to rapidly pay down our debt, better position ourselves financially going into the future, is something that these agencies are identifying as one of our strongest characteristics right now. It's kind of a, good to see a plan, you know, come to fruition, which I think is happening, so.
All right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And is there an offer of Resolution 2018-F6 awarding the sale of general obligation bond series 2018A in aggregate principal amount of $9,970,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing further payment?
So moved.
Okay. Resolution has been offered. Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I would, in layman's terms, like to spell out for those that are listening, that the AAA bond rating is not something this board can control. We've gotten us as close as we can get to AAA. The only way to get to AAA now is to enhance the wealth of all our residents. So as we continue to attempt to do that, we do understand that that is more than county board-driven, it's market-driven, our cities have a lot to do with that, the economy has a lot to do with it, and certainly geography and many other things. But to be clear, the board has done, all of the fiduciary responsibilities that the board has towards that AAA rating have been met, and would be AAA but for the wealth of our average constituent.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte, and I think it's important to note, I know that there will be those that say, well, there was a AAA bond rating at one point in time that changed, the rating agencies changed their criteria. Is that correct, or some of, you want to address it, Corey, or the way that they look at things was a little different, I think, with some of the challenges within the financial markets in general and some of the things that they were seeing, I think they kind of took a look at some of the things they were doing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, to the point that you were talking, after 2008 and all the financial difficulties that occurred throughout our country, the rating agencies got themselves into a little trouble too. They relooked at the formula and changed it, changed it up and rerated many of the governments across the country. And so what you're seeing is the new formula that came out, was it in 2010? Was that when it came out?
It sounded like it.
Around 2010, 2011 is when they all came out with a little different twist to it, and they downgraded many governments across the United States. We weren't just one of those, and so they just took a little harder look at the AAA and made it more difficult, and that's where that, this whole change has entered in for us.
Right. Thank you. And with that, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Now we'll move on to Human Services Committee report. We have just a couple of items. The first is under Community Corrections to consider recommending the county board enter into contract C-0006840, a renewal with General Security Services Corporation for Officer of the Day Services in an amount not to exceed $221,582, the 2% increase from December 1st, 2018 through November 30th, 2019. And I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then final item is Resolution 2018-HS17, the Economic Assistance Bills, and I will offer that resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that concludes my report. Now we will move on to Public Safety Committee Chair report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would recommend adoption of Resolution 2018-PS13, which is accepting dedication donation from McDonough K9. They are donating two dogs to the Anoka County Sheriff's Office and our K9 program.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
So moved.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gamash. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
I would recommend acceptance and execution of the FY18 DNA Laboratory Efficiency Improvement and Capacity Enhancement Program Grant between the Office of Justice Programs and the County of Anoka, in the amount of $182,395, with effective date of January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2022. What this will do is enhance the capabilities of the Midwest Regional Forensic Laboratory Biology Section and reduce the time required to complete DNA request for services.
I would move approval of the contract?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
And now I will turn it over to County Attorney Tony Palumbo for a public hearing to obtain public comment on the Anoka County Park System Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will convene the public hearing at this time. Should note for the record that a notice of this hearing was published in the Anoka County Union on October 12th, 2018. Ask the Secretary to make that part of the record. And at this point, I would ask the Parks Director, Mr. Jeff Perry, to address the board on this particular matter, the Anoka County Park System Plan, which is to establish and guide the strategic direction of the park system in the next decade. If you would, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jeff Perry. I'm the Park Director for Anoka County. In accordance with state statute and Metropolitan Council policy requirements, Anoka County is required to prepare and submit a comprehensive park system plan every 10 years. In addition, a formal public hearing is required as part of the plan review process. The draft Anoka County Park System Plan is a result of a two-year planning process involving county staff, citizens, outside agency representatives, and elected officials across Anoka County. I prepared a brief presentation of the draft plan that focuses on the key elements of the plan. In addition, please note, the full version of the draft plan can be reviewed and commented upon at www.anokacounty.us/planyourparks, or by calling the Anoka County Park Headquarters Office at 763-324-3300. And as always, we value and welcome all public comments. With that said, I will just highlight the primary features and components of the draft park system plan at this time. In terms of the plan objective, it's to establish and guide strategic direction of the park system over the next 10 years. It will serve as a vision and planning document to guide development, operations, and natural resources conservation across the system. And lastly, it advances Anoka County's goal of being a model park system that instills a sense of pride and enthusiasm among citizens while furthering the standards of innovation and park excellence here in Anoka County. In terms of the mission, vision, and guiding principles, the mission of the plan is to positively impact the quality of life in Anoka County. In addition, the conservation of natural resources is front and center due to the fact that we have a natural resource-based park system, improving the health of citizens, supporting a strong local economy, and serving our citizens in a respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible manner. In terms of the vision, pretty straightforward, strengthen the natural character of the park system to connect citizens to the outdoors by creating innovative opportunities for outdoor recreation and human fulfillment. And some of the core guiding principles that guide the plan are focused on the visitor: open communication, fiscal responsibility, creativity, cooperation, and equity, a commitment to excellence, continuing improvement, and economic, social, and environmental prosperity. Anoka County system at a glance, its 11,500-acre park system serves approximately 4.9 million visitors annually, 4.2 million in the regional system, and then the rest of the county parks is about .7 million, comprised of 10 regional parks, 10 regional trails, seven county regional parks, five county parks, two conservation areas, and one park reserve. It's geographically distributed across the county. One of the common themes throughout the plan is community engagement. The goals of community engagement are to connect with the public first and foremost, target both park and non-park users, build positive relationships with the public, foster community ownership of parks, and ensure the public is aware of and understand what the parks have to offer. There are four primary focus areas of the plan that I'll briefly cover, first of which is natural resources management. Some of the goals and strategies in that particular area include ecologically sound sound land stewardship across the park system, conservation and preservation of land and water resources, biological diversity and function, and invasive species management, both terrestrial and aquatic invasive species throughout the county. The second key focus area are regional trails and connections. Currently, there's 90 miles of regional multimodal trails, and there are 246 additional miles that are proposed over the next 10 years. In addition to those multimodal trails, the goal and objective is to maintain equestrian and horse trails throughout the system, water trails with the Mississippi, Rum River, and Rice Creek, partnerships with local snowmobile clubs, cross-country ski trails, and lastly, plowed winter walking trails. Focus area number three, building the customer experience. Accessibility and equity is at the forefront to identify, reduce barriers to use regardless of age, income, race, ethnicity, ability, or geographic location. Education and interpretation, the goal is to expand educational opportunities within the park system and foster partnerships to promote the importance of parks for the health and well-being of the citizens of Anoka County. In terms of visitor services, actively pursue visitor needs through citizen engagement, and with marketing and awareness, embrace technology through new innovative, cost-effective approaches. The final focus area is sustaining the park system. Effective planning and use of human and capital resources are critical to this plan. System-wide management standards to maximize infrastructure and asset replacement life cycles are critically important. And lastly, effective preventative maintenance programs and efficient equipment and shared resources throughout the county. We've positioned ourselves to become more efficient with using the resources that are available to us throughout Anoka County. Lastly, in terms of the park system investment and funding plan, the capital investment plan is a 10-year project forecast. It entails approximately $30 million worth of identified projects, and the goal is to maximize grant financing through federal, state, and local grants, and to strengthen community partnerships throughout Anoka County. At the end of the day, what that looks like is 28 million worth of state and federal and local grants, with 2 million in county finance capital investment. And with that, Anoka County stands ready to advance the strategic direction of the park system over the next decade, to be a model that instills a sense of pride and enthusiasm among the citizens while furthering the standards of park excellence in Anoka County, the metropolitan region, and the state of Minnesota. And again, the draft system plan can be viewed at www.anokacounty.us/planyourparks. And in conclusion, the formal comment period ends in early November, and the final plan recommendation will be brought before the board in December of this year before submittal to the Metropolitan Council. So with that, Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes my presentation.
Do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Perry?
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Got a question, just a quick comment. I'm always amazed at the work that the Parks folks do. You guys just do a great job. And this is obviously, once again, another example of it. And just, when we have 4.9 visitors annually, it's a pretty amazing number of people that come to our county. And not all of them are residents of Anoka County already. So it's obvious that the word is spread all across the Twin Cities and all across Minnesota of what a great park system we have. And I just want to thank all in the park system and all the people that work on this project and on our parks every day. Thank you very much for the great work that you do.
Okay. Any other questions, comments by the board? Seeing none, I will now open it up for any public comment, any members of the public wish to come forward and address the board on this matter. Any members of the public wish to come forward? And I will ask a third time, any members wish to come forward and offer public comment. I see none at this time, Madam Chair, so I will now close the meeting and turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Now we will move on to item number 10. Consider approving contract C-0006869 with Empurion Benefit Solutions to provide Benefit Hub Services and Affordable Care Act required reporting for Anoka County its employees for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2021, at an annual cost of $114,540, as recommended by myself, the responsible commissioner for insurance. Just to give you a little background on this, our employees have been utilizing this hub since 2015 in assisting them in selecting their health insurance benefits, or during the employee open enrollment period. They also collect the information and provide our employees with the mandated Affordable Care Act reports that are required. It was originally provided through Blue Cross Blue Shield as part of our health insurance package. Now, the contract between Blue Cross Blue Shield and Empurion is dissolving, and Blue Cross Blue Shield is heading in another direction. However, Blue Cross Blue Shield has an obligation as part of our contract to continue to provide the services. So as a result, you know, we have liked the services, we want to continue those services. So Blue Cross Blue Shield will actually be reimbursing us for this service, again, because they're obligated as part of the contract to provide this type of service. So appreciate the great work by Bill Keller in really negotiating and getting us to this point. So I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Savaraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. The final item is to consider amending contract C-000127 to extend services with SFM Risk Solutions for workers' compensation third-party administration services under the current terms and conditions for one year starting January 1st, 2019, at an annual cost of $41,525, with an option to renew for four additional one-year periods at the same rate. And the fee for the one year starting January 1st is the $41,525. And this is actually a reduction of $3,732 from our current fee. So, you know, once again, great work by Bill Keller, and also really great work by not only him and his staff, but the employees of Anoka County. We have really worked really hard to make sure that we have a reduced number of injuries and reduce severity of those injuries, and the proper safety measures and so forth. And so I think it's reflected in this as well. So I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Savaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. And if there is nothing else to come before the county board, meeting is adjourned.